Okay, this is the New Durham Board of Selectmen. We're at the fire station. And it is five after the hour of noon. It's also, uh... Mr. Dave, thank you.
Seventh, February 7th.
February 7th. And to my left is...
David Swenson.
Gregory Ampties.
And Scott Kidman, Town Administrator.
And I'm David Victor. And, I know I did that in here. Right, there it is. It's not a bad bill. I've got my miles out of order here. Okay, now this one you can't have, because that's...
Well, I told, actually, I told David he offered it to me as an offer to pass on that. But I did have that.
Did you have one of those?
Thank you.
How were they?
They're good. Most are all the sticks, yeah.
How was the marinara sauce?
Good, yeah, very good. No, it was good.
So now I'll call a meeting for order.
You don't have to put that in the minutes.
Oh, maybe I want...
You don't have to put that in the minutes.
Let's talk about the menus more. Well, the important things first, for God's sake. Okay. Go on the meeting for order. We have no appointments today. Public input, all we have is our...
He turned us down.
Yeah, thank you. Justin, our videographer, and do you have anything to tell us, Justin? Okay.
Well, you just might want to repeat his comment, just in summary form, that the deliberative session, video and audio last night had some technical issues. They're working on trying to resolve that, and we'll put up whatever they can, once they've had an opportunity to uncrash their hard drive.
Well, I thought we'd do that when we get up to deliberative session recap.
Yeah, but you offered him to make a comment. I wanted to at least have that covered.
So I think that's where we can go, is right to the Town Administrator's report on deliberative session. We got, what do you want to tell us, Scott?
I just wanted to let you know, and I give you copies here. I did track changes relative to the changes that I forwarded off to the attorney this morning, just to make sure everything comports. My reading of it, it appears that it's... It can be done with the... Only question that I had was, because the actual Warren article, which is in existence, was not within the schedule, would be the only issue of any kind of debate. So I've asked him to weigh in on that. I believe the intent, because as you read the description of the SB2, what the deliberative session can do, as long as they do not change the actual intent of the actual article in their amendment, other than spending, or decreasing or increasing monetarily. So, I mean, it may be something.
You do have one typo there.
Oh, I do, okay.
Yeah, just one. Before you finalize it for final printing, just correct that. There's a capital R on trucks.
Oh, yep. And actually, the S comes off, because I looked it up, it's actually truck.
Yep.
Highway truck. So, I have sent that off this morning, but I haven't heard anything, and I did change the tax rate. And I guess probably based on some conversation that I heard, was if there was a previous amendment made, then the board re-voted on the article, maybe, and so didn't the Budget Committee, so I...
Needs to.
Needs to. So, based upon our meeting schedule, you know, you may want to look at that now and make a rendering on that. Because we will be looking to put the ballot together in the next couple of days, get that off the printer.
Well, I'm going to mention, this is, we're talking about Article 5, and what was agreed to originally, and approved by a five, seven to oh vote for the Budget Committee, and a three to oh vote by the Selectmen. We had excluded the Highway Truck this year for the Capital Reserve Fund of $50,000. And there was a purpose for that. And there was a purpose why I may did not want that. There was a purpose that the CIP Committee did not want that. And, and looking at now, the Expendable Trust Fund, which is an increase from the year before, but there were, there's parts in the Expendable Trust Fund that we really need to now fund. The accrued benefits liability, we now look at town building improvements that we've not really followed through in past years, or had it as much, and then the computer office maintenance and so forth. And we added ten for that. But that was a $65,000 increase. And because of these increases, the CIP Committee recommended that we would not put in this year, the $50,000. I think Scott Kidman agreed with that, the CIP Committee agreed with that. And, and then again, like I said, when this came to vote to the Budget Committee from the CIP of planning, they did not have it put in through their budget process. So, it is a right of during, you know, SB2 last night, as the citizens want, wants to increase their taxes and so forth, whoever shows up at these meetings, that's exactly what happened there. And, and I'm going to tell you, I get calls from people, and they tell me, you know, our taxes are too high in New Durham. I've had people tell me, we have to leave New Durham because the taxes are high, we're going to move to another community. I've had other people that I've tried to convince to come to New Durham, and they say, once we looked at the taxes here in New Durham, it's higher than other communities, and we just can't afford it. And I'm constantly hearing this from, from my residents that call me, my taxpayers, saying, you've got to keep the taxes lower. And, and this is something that's dear to my heart, and is very important to me, that we follow through with what I've heard from the residents, why I got elected to lower taxes and so forth. And when we can adjust an amount one year to lower it, then we should do that. And this, this increase from what the CIP Committee had recommended is well over $100, $150,000 more. And that's a, that is a large chunk from taxpayers to pay, and I think unnecessarily. So, it, I'm against this, this vote that happened last night. I don't think it was appropriate. As Scott said, he's now having the attorneys look at it, but it was not part of the, the Article 5. And it was something added on to it. It added on to the price, it increased the price, and I just don't think that's legitimate. So not only will I not vote for this, but I think it's improper to do this and to follow through this. And for last night, we heard from, the moderator said she didn't think we should be doing this. We heard from several of the Budget Committee people said, we are, we are not supporting this. And the three Selectmen had voted for the original amount, and I certainly do not support this increase, and I don't think it's appropriate, appropriate or legal to do, to put back on the taxpayers, to be put onto a Warren article. So, I'm adamantly against this, and I think it was inappropriate and improper, and I just think we're not looking after our taxpayers and keeping our rates down when we can. Swenson, do you want to say something?
Well, two things. One is, I want to correct Greg on one thing. The ETFs is not a $65,000 increase from last year. It's, it's maybe an increase last year, but it's not 65,000.
ETF, you said?
Yeah. He mentioned ETFs were 65,000 increase from last year. That's not, that's not accurate.
No, I didn't, I didn't say it.
Yeah, you did, actually, but that's okay. I, I think I understood what you're trying to mean, but I just wanted to make sure that the record's correct, that it was not a $65,000 increase on ETFs.
No.
So, but I do think, you know, the Board of Selectmen does need to take the recommendation action on Article 5 now. So, I don't know if you have any other things to say or not, if not, go ahead with that.
Probably not recommend it, but we are in a dicey situation, because I don't think we can separate these out now.
Exactly.
That's what some towns do, and I've always been skeptical of doing this grouping because of this very reason, is that they don't want it each one separate, which would make you question how they would be able to amend one of those to add something completely different into it. So it's, this, if the recommendation would say, don't vote for the entire group, that I'm trying to look at this and say, well, how do we get along then? I guess we could, I, this, one, two, yes, we could, that's okay. It just puts us behind on all the others. That's my concern.
Yeah, if it's voted down.
Oh, if it's voted down, yeah.
The article, if the article voted down.
Yeah.
Then you wouldn't make any contributions.
I don't know what you're saying puts us behind, because the others still stand as the others are.
I understand that.
Yep.
And I'm trying to, you know, if people take my recommendations seriously, and I think many have, but I have to, I do totally agree with you, Greg, on this, this thing. This was worked out and discussed a great deal. My other concern is, if, if it comes back that you can't throw in one that's not mentioned from the Attorney or DRA, then we need to go back to our original vote.
Yeah, and that would be part of the motion.
Right. This would only be if, in fact, it's changed the way that I...
Yeah, if it's legally acceptable.
But I don't find it... It's a hot pill, swallow, believe me. Yeah. All right, well, I guess that's all I can say, and I guess we should take a vote, then. Let's see. Well, let me say, let me say one other thing. Last night, and I appreciate the people that show up to the SB2 deliberative session, I appreciate all of them, but there were less than 40 people out in the audience. Of the people that voted for this increase, I would say it's in the matter of a couple dozen people.
Yeah.
So a couple dozen people can change what three committees approved that, that are trying to be fiscally responsible for the taxpayers. So a couple dozen people change this, and because they sneak it in on with all these others, and put it on with these others, maybe sneak isn't the word, but put it on with, with the others, I think it was totally inappropriate, and it should not have never been accepted. And, 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 and so I, I'm adamantly against, I don't like the idea that a few people dictate over the system, the majority. It may be the system, but they, there's consequences for their bad decisions. And one of them is, the taxes are going to go up on, on good, hardworking people in New Durham. And like I said, I hear from these people, they stop me in the store, they call me up and say, please lower our taxes, any way you can lower our taxes. And, and, and I tell them, well, there's certain things that we have to do as a town, we have certain responsibilities to maintain services and so forth, but this is not going to do it. This does not do it, and it, to me, it just bloats our town government, and doesn't achieve what we should be doing here. So again, I am furious about this. And I understand what happened last night, but I don't think those people clearly understood what, what's going to happen, you know, and to all the other 2,500 or 2,600 residents because of two dozen people. And my feeling is, turn the whole damn thing down, if it, if, if, if it's, if it's approved by our attorneys and so forth, turn it down, and, and Article 5, and send a message that we are no longer going to just keep taxing the residents, taxing the residents, and so forth. I think it's going to come to a head here, that I don't know what, I don't know what we have to say, other than when people can't move into New Durham because our tax rate's too high that want to, people are leaving New Durham when they don't want to because the tax rate's too high, that's sending a message that that's harming New Durham. So, like I say, I, I don't get emotionally involved, as a rule, it's usually all fact-based and so forth, but this one, it's both. I just want to make that point.
Well, that actually was a classic example of what can happen at a SB2. There's a classic reason why some people don't like SB2. But, you know, other people could have come out. They had the ambition to come out and do this, that were, I'm going to guess, they were probably organized, and knew what they were going to do before they even got here.
Oh, I'm sure they did.
So...
And they, I...
Congratulations to them for...
Yeah.
For being there.
But look, look at the harm they did, and they've got to start paying the price for that. And call them out on it.
As far as the moderator accepting it, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I would have been in the same situation. I wouldn't have known which way to call it either on this, on this one.
I think she did what she thought was...
Yeah.
How she read it, and what she thought was the right thing to do. And I think it was actually handled properly in the end, that it's subject to RSA or legal review to make sure that it is appropriate, and if not, it doesn't go in, and if it is, it does go in. So I do think it was handled properly in the end.
Yeah, I would have probably done it the same way. I, I was sitting there going, I'm not sure if this applies or not.
Well, the moderator should have known that in advance, if we could do this or not.
Well, it's tricky.
That's her, apparently, that's her responsibility.
Actually, it's a town's responsibility. The town could have had legal advice right there on the, on site there.
Yeah.
We have in the past.
We could have?
We didn't, yeah.
You could have a town council there, I mean...
We've had in the past.
I've always had town council. Town meeting, but that was town meeting.
But if this group knew that this is what they were going to do...
You've got to make a decision, you know.
If this group knew that this is what they were going to do, or an individual that brought this up, knew that they were going to do this, they should have contacted Scott and say, can we do this, is it legal, and, and found this out beforehand. And this is my whole point. These people come to these meetings, they do certain things that cause harm to the tax residents and to the town, and if they would have checked it out beforehand, they would have known what was really going on. Now, some people, I understand, they want certain things, okay. There's certain people that are just followers. Whatever, whatever their little leadership says to them, they follow through. But there's consequences here, and that's my point. And this has happened several times since I've been Board of Selectmen. I've seen this group, I've seen what's going on, and it does not hurt, it does not help the town, it hurts the town. And in, in my last two years, this group and some of these other groups have cost the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars because of their actions. And, and quite frankly, I am angry about this. And I think, you know, if you're a sneak, this is what you do. If you really care about the town, and you care about this issue, which at Riverside, you call ahead of time, can we change this, this Warren article? You know, it's not like these Warren articles is produced that night, they've been out there for weeks. So they could have planned, looked at it and said, can we do this? Can we do this legally? And, and gone through the right channels beforehand, rather than cause chaos at, at a meeting. And this is what I think some people want. They want chaos. And it doesn't help the town, it doesn't help the taxpayers, and what, the three Boards of Selectmen and Scott, we're working hard to run this town properly. We don't always agree, and I think if you watch these videos and so forth, and listen to some of us, we disagree sometimes, very strongly. But in the end, we try to work together, we try to do what's right for the town, and we rely on Scott to give us this information, which she's done an excellent job. And that, and we're doing our job, but if, if people are, are going to want something different, then let us know in advance, so they know in advance you can and cannot do this, rather than cause this chaos. And, and that's one of my points. It just does not help the town, and, and, and quite frankly, it's getting tiring, and it's getting tiring to residents. They call me and say, I don't come to board meetings anymore because of these people always yelling and screaming at you guys, I don't want to put up with it anymore. I don't want to go anymore. So when we have, at a SB2, which is one of the most important meetings for the town, we have, what, 30 people show up, 35 people show up, whatever it may be?
Forty-five, I'm going to guess.
Okay, well, with everybody, including us, but, but, but there was...
We are residents, by the way. Just in case you were wondering.
No, I understand that, but I'm speaking of the public coming out for these.
We are public also.
Well, we're, yeah, it's true, but we're required. But, but I guess my whole point here is, I think, what I hear from taxpayers when they call me and individuals, they, we don't want to come, I'm going to leave that up to you to fight for us. And, and that's why I'm so adamant. And I know, I, hey, I know that the other two Selectmen have repeatedly told me that they want to lower taxes. I know Dave Bitford has, has, his whole history of not only here in New Durham as a Selectman, but as a representative, and as a county representative, he has wanted to lower taxes for people without hurting the services and so forth. Selectmen Swenson, some, sometimes you and I get in discussions and so forth, back and forth, but, but I feel as though you've, you've said repeatedly that you do want to lower taxes, and you've worked to lower taxes over the period of time you've been a Selectman. So, so...
We need to move on there.
Okay, but I, I just want people to understand that this, this is troubling.
I do, I don't, you know, I don't want to extend the discussion very long on this issue. I do want to challenge one comment, though, which was, which bothered me a little bit. You mentioned that the cost to taxpayers is hundreds of thousands of dollars because of some of their actions. I challenge that, but I don't want to get into a back and forth on that, so I just, I think you're not correct there.
All right, the Board, how do we shape this amendment?
I'll, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion which I think will...
All right.
Push it in a, in a way that at least covers us, no matter what the legal review is, if you don't, if you don't mind. We may formulate it a little bit as we move it, but just quickly, I will make the motion for the Board of Selectmen to recommend Article 5, as it was revised at the deliberative session of February 6, 2017, provided that legal review indicates that it is an acceptable action by the deliberative session.
That sounds like it works.
I think that's a, and, and one more second, and if not, a acceptable legal action, that the original Board of Selectmen recommendation stands. And I think that's the motion.
Well, that's pretty clear.
Yeah, so...
I mean, you don't need that much, but that's really, really, really clear.
I know that, and I wanted to, because of our discussion, I wanted to make sure that, you know, there's no ifs, ands, or buts, if this or if that. So, that's the motion.
All right, I will second that motion. That's, Swenson makes the motion, and Victor seconds it. So, all those...
No. We haven't voted yet.
You gotta, you gotta...
Hold your horses.
You gotta ask for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I thought we probably hit that pretty well.
We had a lot of discussion.
No, no, no.
Okay. But you are correct.
The discussion is, the discussion is about the motion. I think the motion should be put in two parts, not put together.
Well, it's, it's only about changing this, this three zero vote. That's it, that's all we're doing here.
No, the, the motion goes beyond that. The motion, I think it should be a twofold motion. The motion should say, do we, do we still retain our original vote on the original Article 5?
Yep.
And re- reconfirm that that is what we support.
Well, it's a, it's a, what happens is, a legal review throws this $50,000 out of it, then this, everything is back the way it is.
Right. Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not going to vote for something that if they don't, then we're voting to approve that $50,000, and that's what this motion says.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, no, not if you vote against the motion. You obviously want to vote against the motion.
Right, and this is why I think we should separate out the motion. So, so people clearly understand where we stand on this.
Separate out the motion.
Well, I'm, what, what we're saying is, do we, or do we not agree with what was changed?
It's, it's going to say, all, all the changes on the print, it's going to be those two numbers with this motion.
No, 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 this motion goes beyond this vote. This motion goes that we're accepting this if the attorneys accept this, and I'm saying I don't think we should accept it.
Yeah, but this motion is going to do like you said.
You either vote for, if you vote for it, then you accept the...
The change.
Changes, and if you vote against it, you don't accept the changes.
Right. Well, all right, I, I'm saying we should separate it out, but that, that was my part of the discussion.
I think it's fine. So, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, Swenson and I. Those who oppose, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay. All right, that's a one to two. It'll show up on the...
Good.
That takes care of everything on that?
Yeah, I think so. You know, as soon as we get that word back, and, you know, of course, I'll talk to Michelle at DRA, just to make sure that what needs, if there anything else that needs to be done, and then...
We used to check with them on these articles, if they were correct or not.
Right.
And legal, we had two, two opinions.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get both, because I have to have...
And it wasn't right that DRA would be wanting to say, no.
Yeah, sometimes DRA says, well, you got to go to legal, to see if, in fact, that interpretation...
Depends on what it is, yeah.
Of the statute, and then...
But a money issue, they often were the, the breaking one on that.
Right. So we'll, you know, make sure we have it from both sides of it, and I'll let you know how that comes out, just as soon as it does come out that way, and then I'll get with Stephanie to work on the ballot, to get that squint away. On the ballot, I did work with Stephanie yesterday to go through the composition as to how the names will appear on the ballot, based upon the way the Secretary of State has it set up, where you pull a, pull a number, and then that's where the alphabet, whoever's number, and then the alphabeticalize after that and such. So we got that nailed down yesterday, and get that, so that portion is built, she has, and then we'll put the articles in thereafter. From the meeting last night, I also printed out the new maps for the watershed overlay. I was able to print those out in color, and I have put a stack of them there in the lobby as well, so that people coming in, pick them up, and I'll include it. I'm going to work on, now, my next big thing is to work on a voter's guide that can be put together after, now that deliberative session's over, which just basically gives a generalized overview of each article, and what's contained within it, that way, of a neutral state in that descriptor, so. It's more or less basically the text of the articles, and then what's contained within them.
What's it mean?
So, like the operating budget article one, has the actual, what the operating, what the accounts are for each one of them, along with the default, very similar to the page you saw last night, would be some of that information.
Okay.
Most towns have gone down to a voter's guide with SB2, because just like the uninformed voter situation, is people show up to polls, first time, you know, they've even taken a squint at it, and so...
We had one in 2015.
Yeah.
We had one in 2015.
It's a matter of them picking it up, or, you know, it doesn't go with the ballot.
No, it actually, this...
It's available, but not...
If I can get it knocked out before the end of the week, it can, it can be part of the town report, so at least people that pick up a town report.
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past in the town report.
So, we're still working...
If you can't, you can always have a flyer available, or make it available on the website, that sort of thing.
We are going to be looking at a hard deadline of next Monday, Tuesday, to try to get that off to the printer for proof. We sent electronic version.
The annual report we're figuring out.
The annual reports. So, we've gotten, got most of them collected now. We'll probably be looking at next Monday to have a proofing session using the staff to review different pieces of it, do some proofreading, shuffle them around.
How many pages are they going to give for my, should be, I'm going to do what I did last year, but I took two pages. Now, this one, I haven't, I've started writing a little bit of it, but I'd like to make it a little bit shorter, since your TA report has some interesting things in it. But I like the graph, and I think, Swenson, you had originally made that graph, and I think it's something we should continue.
Yep.
And this, this graph is...
Yeah, I can, and I, I'll make sure that's updated.
Actually, we've done that every...
I actually have, I actually have an update, an update every year.
We used to use...
He's already updated.
Instead of...
I can send it to him.
Well, I like the, the way we did it the last year and the year before. It has all four...
Categories.
Yeah, categories or groups, you know, it's the...
Of tax rate for the...
That's right. That, that the taxpayers pay into.
Yeah, that's it.
And it, it really shows you that over the last five, 10 years...
Reusing the tape.
Yeah, it's, sorry, go ahead, quick.
Yeah, well, and it, and it shows the uptick, and if you look at this, it very quickly can see that the, the Selectmen, with the help of Scott and the other department heads and the employees and... heads, and the employees, and, you know, and, and our imagination of, of, of how to save money for the taxpayers, we have been dropping, and it's very dramatic how we've dropped the tax rate here in New Durham, the selectmen have, with the help of others, and, and then the increase of the, the school system. And, and I know that Dave here has gone to the school, you know, when they have their deliberative session, or when they're talking about theirs. I just happened to show up to the one the other day, and Dave was there, and when Dave walked up the microphone, they knew who he was. So, he has a relationship with, with, with the board there.
It's easy, there aren't that many people with him.
That's true. But, but anyway, but, you know, it, it's nice to have that input, knowing, and one of Dave's points was to them, was we need this information well before the meeting, so we can comment on it. And I know that when I was looking at it, I, I had my wife with me, she was looking at it, and I had some questions, but because I didn't have the background, and I was just looking at it for the first time, I couldn't make, I didn't want, feel comfortable making this statement. However, I did in the end, while we're on this little subject, well, at the very end of it, I did thank the board there, and this would be the one we're, the, the school district board. I thanked them for allowing us to have the use of the school, one for, for our elections, and sometimes others, when we have large meetings, we can use those facilities, because sometimes this room doesn't hold over forty-five, the town hall about forty, and so forth. And I thanked them for that, and it was so nice, after the meeting, that wonderful lady came up, what was her name, and thanked us for thanking them. The-
Oh, the superintendent?
She, she was the superintendent, I forget her name.
Cuddy Egbert.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes I get it wrong.
Very nice lady, but that was very kind of her to, to one, when Scott and, and I think the other selectman went to ask that, that we could use the, for election days, they came up with the idea of just not having school that day, but also that we have a right to go in, in other days and evenings to have meetings. So, she was kind of the spearhead, so the superintendent I want to thank, and I thank the other board members for doing that. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that while we're on that subject.
When I had spoke to the superintendent and the financial officer up there, not at the school meeting, but I went to their offices, we often do pie charts. For years, I, I know going back to the nineties, probably into the eighties, we used pie charts. They said that's not a good, accurate thing to compare with. So, I went back through recently and looked, and they're, they're probably right, the, because back, I don't know, fifteen years ago, whatever, the school tax was sixty-five percent, just as it is now. And it goes, as we go down the tax, their tax is gonna go up, their percentage is gonna go up, even if they stayed still, because in that pie chart. The, of course, the real way to, or best way to show differentials is through the dollars, you know, this is the different, we're, we're asking for this many dollars left, less, to be, either be committed tax for comparison, for the best comparison, I think, the way we're going. But anyway, whatever we can do, be good.
Now, what else do we have that we want to?
For all set on deliberative session, the next item that I had was, just to review, make sure I have it down correctly, so I can post it, for the meeting schedule going from in February to March. I had written down one date being March first, as being the next meeting date, but March sixth is also the first one, first meeting in March. So, I, I guess I just wanted to double check with you, so I post it properly, and, you know, get us through town meeting time, and then I'm sure there'll be an organizational session after that, and we can talk more about meeting schedules after election time. So-
And you have, is that a Monday?
March first is a Wednesday.
Yeah, the first is a Wednesday.
Sixth is the Monday.
Yeah, and I-
The sixth, the sixth is Monday.
I know, some folks have plans, but-
Do?
Maybe. I, I might, I might make some plans.
Oh, okay.
You never know.
Don't blame you. So, what are we?
I'm okay.
His question, I think, is, do you want one, both the first and the sixth, or-
Right.
Do we only need one on the sixth? I think that's your question.
Yeah, I guess that's the only question. My, the biggest things that are gonna be transpiring is, and I'll need to coordinate with you folks, you know, you know, these, not having regular sessions over the next three weeks here, or whatever, would be just coordination relative to manifests and such, as far as getting them signed, and, and folks working on that. And then the only other thing is, I mean, I'm gonna be spending time, hey, this week here, I'd like to try to get that voter guide nailed down, and then I'm, I'm gonna be working on other project stuff. I have the personnel policies that I've been working on, using that template that I received from Allenstown. I've gotten a start into that, but I'd like to have, you know, that in March, after the board gets all organized up, ready to go, that I have something to, for us to work on and be able to present. So, having a little bit of the downtime that way, as far as meeting schedules, I can, you know, see if I can crank some of that material out and have it prepped for-
You're sure, yeah.
For that.
The question is, for you more than anything, because you're the one that used to say, "Well, we ought to have one every week."
Yeah.
So, you see that in the next three weeks, we don't need to have a meeting, that it doesn't, because you're the guy that people knock, your door they're knocking on, saying, "I need, I need this contract signed, and I need this," whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've got stuff right now that needs to be dealt with going forward. DPW's got their requisition forward here as far as assault, hopefully carry them through the, the month here and into, into the March, so I think they're gonna be okay there. Unless there's a catastrophic failure with something that, you know, causes a repair of a vehicle that exceeds three thousand dollars in that situation there, then, you know, that's, that would be the only thing that may come up in, in that situation. But other than that, I don't see anything during this period until after election. I wouldn't look for any major expenditures to happen until after that anyways.
So, you're saying you, you think we'd-
I think it can squeak by.
Better off go to six?
They can go to six.
Okay.
You know, if something comes up and, and everybody's around, you know, and we have to have a, something of emergency nature.
Yeah, we call, all around, see if anybody's still-
So, we're taking off the first, then? We're not gonna have it on the first?
Yeah, I mean, I think just go to six. Yeah, if that works, all right, for everybody.
Everybody could be sapping that then, anyway.
Yeah, hopefully.
Hopefully.
All right.
And we'll do that, a regular meeting at-
Seven o'clock, is the sixth scheduled for.
Right.
We have six and six, don't we, on the sixth?
We have seven o'clock at the-
Seven.
At the sixth.
Oh, you're gonna change it from six to seven on the sixth?
Oh, do we have it on the sixth?
No, it's, it was scheduled for seven to begin with.
Oh, I had it down at six o'clock on the sixth.
You would've been early.
Well, I'm always early.
No, I'm good with six and seven.
I mean, that gets you out of here earlier.
Unless we get.
Whatever, boy wants to-
I mean, I don't mind afternoon meetings.
Seven o'clock's good for me.
Yeah, seven's good for me, but I can get to six if I need to this time of year.
So, we change it to the seven, then?
Well, I always had it at seven.
Oh, I get to agree with you.
You're changing, and I'm keeping it the same.
All right, let's, let's go with that.
Okay, I'll post that.
All right, well, just as FYI, I have a furnace issue that I have to get back to. I have to go about two o'clock, so.
Oh, furnace issue?
Yeah.
A what issue?
Furnace issue.
Oh, furnace?
Yeah.
In that case, we need to, all right, skip along.
Just as an FYI, I know, we're okay.
See, I just wanted to give you an FYI.
So, so that should be okay there. I know at that meeting, just, you know, some of those things, it'll be brought up, I'm sure, on the sixth meeting is, as far as coverage at the polls, and that kind of stuff coming up for the election, on that side of things there. You guys pretty much know that whole drill, and who takes what shift, and what type of thing they have.
I'll, I'll be there all day.
They know the chairman's running for election, so he's, he's probably gonna be able to get out on a kitchen pass if he wants, on that situation, if he wants.
I called the Secretary of State, and Attorney General, I said, "No way."
Yeah.
Last time.
What, oh, that you have to come?
No, that you, yeah, they told me I had to be in the, inside the building, said no kitchen pass, if you're going.
Well, you could do the designate thing, if you needed, if you didn't want-
That's right, we did pass designate since then.
Yeah, so.
So, I, I usually come in the morning, and then stay until Dave comes. Or, you're gonna be there most of the day, I would hope, or would you?
I don't know, quite frankly, I, I, I agree that, I don't think it's the best thing to do. It agitates some people, they think you're inside the hole when you're running for election.
Right.
And I can understand that.
I'm not running, I'll be there all day.
Oh, okay, good.
As usual, when I'm not, when I'm not running.
So, I, I'm not gonna commit unless, I don't wanna say I'm not, because, you know, the Secretary of State, Attorney General, if it tells me, "Yeah, you gotta be there, then I'll be there."
Okay.
But with that new law in effect, I probably shouldn't have to be. And the moderator can designate someone, too. So, we have two ways, I think, to get around it now, yeah.
Boy, can the moderator be there if she's running, too?
I don't know.
I think the intention would probably be that, that she would probably appoint somebody. I'm just guessing, based on just-
Is there an assistant, or a deputy moderator, so that probably, that person probably covers it?
Is that what, was it Fred that did it?
Yeah.
Fred did it, right?
Fred, Quimby.
Because he went to a class on it, so.
Yeah. Wasn't Fred at the school board meeting?
Yes, he did, he did come.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, New Durham, the moderator come up to me and said, "Gee, David, you brought a big crowd with you there."
That's right.
I said, "You're up three hundred, five hundred percent here."
So, anyway.
We got two people from New Durham running for school board.
Oh, really?
Yeah, bet them both. The, the one girl, what was her name?
Wendy Fitterson.
Wendy Fitterson, and that real nice guy, he's real tall with sunglasses.
Daryl Pack.
Daryl, yeah, Daryl.
He's over on King's Highway.
King's Highway.
They both running for the same position?
Yeah.
So, there's only one of those two?
There's one, but there's actually three, because there's another woman from Wolfboro, I believe it is, Louise Stevens.
For that same position?
Yeah. Yeah, they had, there were two people come out for it.
Wait a minute, she can run on our, our appointee? Isn't the person supposed to represent New Durham?
No, well, they, yes, but also the other towns, too, is, so they call it an at-large member, because it represents the whole district, even though everybody does. The way they set it up is, certain ones would be just voted in from a, each town.
From a region, yeah.
Yeah, and then there'll be, I think it's three others that are at-large.
Who's her permanent?
That everybody votes on them.
Julie Cardinal right now, and then Ernie Brown is our at-large right now.
So, Ernie's not coming?
Well, the three, I think there's three.
Now, yeah, but it was two.
But our person that's, that's the official person is Julie, you say?
Well, both, both of them are official, but the one that's from New Durham is Julie, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she is just voted on by the New Durham residents.
Right.
These folks will be voted on by everyone in the district, the ones that have signed up this one.
That's a copy.
It's an at-large position.
At-large.
That's what they mean by at-large, in this, in this case.
But you meant every, the whole can be-
The whole this, all six, whatever number of towns there are.
Let me ask you another question then. So, how many people are ready for, for the entire district?
Three, for one seat.
Three for just one seat?
Yeah.
Oh, that's-
And then there's another seat, and I don't remember what the situation on that is.
Okay, but that's a specific town?
It might be, I just don't remember.
Swens, were you, were you gonna, were you interested in doing something like that, or do you have time?
I mean, I'd be interested, probably just for the Durham piece of it, not the at-large, but, yeah, I might be interested.
So, if Julie doesn't run again?
They need a little help. I can, that's one of the things I was gonna comment to you, but it was covered later on, is that tax rates are basically school-driven, or, you know, they're sixty-some-odd percent.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, that's my point, and you like that kind of stuff.
I don't know about like, but I can bring some skills.
Well, you're able to do it.
Yeah, but, I'll see.
Okay.
It's fluctuated between fifty-five and sixty-five percent over the years.
Right now, it's sixty-some-odd, yeah, right now, it's sixty-some-odd percent.
Yeah, yeah. Well, anyway, that was a-
Sidetracked.
Yeah, derailed it.
Yeah, derailed it.
But it's interesting news, or information.
Yeah, it is.
So, the other item that I have is that I provided you with a employee performance review merit rating tool with a memo, and have a discussion in regards to the merit rating tool itself, and also a merit compensation percentages. As I indicated in my memo, I, I brought this template to you, I say template, a pirated document, originally came out of Guilford. We utilized it in Moltenborough with some modifications in a couple different areas, one being in the compensation formula, we did that, and, because there was a variation, in other words. In Guilford, they use range-based, so in other words, whatever the score comes out, and it falls within a range, then that is a percentage that's used in that range. Whereas in Moltenborough, percentages were provided incrementally, based upon each point. So, once, one person, to meet a satisfactory evaluation, you had to reach a twelve in a numeric scale, and then any additional point thereafter was assessed at a, a percentage point, or point zero eight three three percent, I believe, was that piece of it. So, incrementally it goes up. The maximum amount that anybody could ever receive on evaluation is four percent, utilizing either, either compensation schedule that way, or with, with either plan, whether it's Guilford's, or whether it's Moltenborough's. What I like about these type of rating forms is that it is a numeric score, it's utilized by everybody, and as you evaluate and look at that, I mean, it has all the other pieces to it, goals and objectives, professional and personal goal setting through the process, but it gives you an actual scale, that everybody is rated the same way on. So, I, I think that it would be best, we went through this whole evolution where in Moltenborough, we had, at one point for police, they had a numeric rating scale for fire and all the other town departments. It was a, either E's, or E's for, you know, exceeds, or M that meets, and U's that were unsatisfactory, and that, that just didn't work out. So, we went to numbers, so that we, as we, especially as we went towards a merit base, because it just, that got away from the whole magic wand application, or, or somebody accusing department heads and/or boards of selectmen, town administrators, from saying that they're using, yeah, using a magic wand, just based upon the totality of looking at it. Now, it does give the opportunity for either the town administrator, board of selectmen, you know, if there was something that was totally missed in the rating form, it does allow for either additional points that can be added to the evaluation itself. That is a, potentially a bonus situation. What that, I say a bonus situation, only it added points to it. If you had a, I use an example, in, in Guilford, they had a young man who put himself through the paramedic training. It wasn't part of his job requirement to do so, but he took that on as his own professional challenge to do that, and, you know, the town, of course, reaped the benefit of that by him having that additional certification and training. So, they chose to give him a, you know, an added bump up on those, on his regular evaluation. They recognized that he went above and beyond, so they gave him, you know, a few extra points, it probably put him into a different percentage scale that way.
You know, I guess he, it would be, on the idea that he would be using it on the job.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I would really, first of all, I mean, we're kind of in the period that we would be looking towards, you know, during the month of March, for the staff to do the evaluations. I would like to do some in-service training with department heads and supervisors on basic, and I gave you a sample of the Primex training that we had for our supervisors and department heads, relative to doing good evaluations, so that it can help dispel what I think some boards of selectmen and town administrators sometimes feel. I think more so elected boards feel that, you know, department heads are just doing the good old boy thing as well, and, and just carrying everybody, so that they get as high a percentage that they can in their compensation scale, because they either feel that- because they either feel that they're undervalued, or, this really emphasizes the, that it needs to be the appropriateness of the scoring by the immediate supervisors and the department heads. I found that going to this type of merit-based numeric scoring, we had probably some of the most honest, driven scores of, of staff. It was, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a situation that, you know, if you have a, a step program and you gotta, also gotta have the satisfactory performance evaluation, everybody was getting them. So everybody got to the next step, where this merit-based system was based and gauged solely upon how they actually scored. Now, one thing Moltenborough did that I would not do is that I would not provide, um, the scoring. In other words, you, you don't give that out ahead of time. You may say that you've adopted a scoring matrix, whether it be range scaled or point scaled, but you wouldn't necessarily attach it to the rating form, because you wouldn't want somebody to say, why, you know, I, I just think that Justin, he's a good guy, good worker. I wanna get him, I wanna get him a two percent, and so they fudge the numbers in order to make that happen. You want them to really look hard, um, and it's up to the town administrator then to department heads, and department heads to supervisors, when they go to do their evaluation, to say, you were just trying to take care of this guy. I see, you've scored him way too high on this. He has, I've seen deficiencies on my end. Um, you know, that, that's a direct reflection upon when they score them. So it's, it's a, they have to understand it's a domino effect that happens, um, to do that. So it needs to be honest, especially with merit-based compensation. I, I think that, that, that really has to be driven home, um, that that's, you know, that's what you have, and that's what you're, how you're gonna reward, and recognize people that, that work hard. Not that everybody doesn't work hard, but some work a little bit harder, and should have that little bit more for doing the little bit more that they do. That's just.
Yeah, I, hard for me to comprehend. I'm trying to work with you on it. I don't come from that. From that, uh, flossy or even familiarity. You know, I worked for corporations many years. We didn't have merit-based.
Mm-hmm.
They have contracts, they know how much money they're gonna make, they have machines, they say, here's a job we need done, we know how much we can pay for it, if we've been it out or want to change the bids, and that's what you pay, until, until the contracts change, and then they might be able to give people more money. You may not get promoted though, or get, maybe a few steps, but it's always a few steps. You know, you get a, a position, and you'll, uh, once you get up to speed in that position, and it takes longer, of course, with the more talents required or skills required. And, uh, to me, that's, it's, it's not about, it's, it's more about the skills and the, the skill sets of where you're getting to. It's not about when you're there that you still keep getting raises. For us, it was a limit. You, you, you come up to a wall, and that's how much you make. And that's how much the company pays or the corporation pays, and if you won't make more money than that, you got to go into another position within the corporation, or you go somewhere else to work.
Generally, I found that to be, um, very much the same with this type of, uh, rating system as well. Some people do excel, and if they still are driving for the aspiration to be a supervisor or to be, uh, you know, something else, um, they'll either, you know, continue to work hard in that area for looking for that advancement and promotion, because they plateau. Generally, that's the reason why you start with your wage scale down at a lower plateau or within that, that quartile range.
Unless you knew that they came in experience, then you might.
Right.
Offer them on the high side.
Right. Yeah, if they come in with that added, then you come in and, and, you know, they're also looked at by having that additional experience, that they operate at a higher level as well.
It'd only be a few, there's gonna be a certain amount of time, whether it be months or the year, then they come back, look at the person and say, okay, with supervisor, this person has cut to the progression we would expect.
Right.
In this amount of time, and so give them the, the, the amount of money that's scheduled. Otherwise, it would be like, well, they haven't got there yet, so we're gonna wait, see how things move along. If they don't, then let them do something else. But if you didn't have a lot of, a lot of steps, and then that would last a, a lifetime, I meant, I'm talking about probably three years, uh, after starting the job, you'd be up to that level. And any other raise would come from whether the corporation decided to do. Yeah, it might be negotiated. We weren't, you know, where I work, but the union had played a role.
Right, influence.
Yeah, and influence, that's the right word. Right, or it might be, it might be inflation rates or something would be taken into consideration. It might be, uh, the skill sets, uh, coming in, and so they'd have to adjust, as I think we have on a couple of occasions.
Yeah.
For the, to address the skill set.
That's where you do your wage adjustments, um, to a certain degree, um, you know, and generally, most municipalities, uh, operate within a five-to-seven-year window, lots of times making some of those, uh, wage adjustments, uh, or, or reassessment, or re, you know, review, and then taking a look at where they are in the market.
Yeah.
With their other competitive folks that are around them, that they potentially could lose people to, um, that way. As you saw last night on the slides, I mean, you've got some people that have been here for a long time, and, you know, they have a wealth of experience, um, that way. So I think the other piece is your younger generation coming in, um, looks for this type of a, uh, compensation schedule versus a, uh, older, uh, base, uh, municipal worker may look at steps or just incrementals, uh, that end up happening, or periodicals, uh, that end up happening. I found that efficiency and, and productivity increased, uh, with a merit-based, uh, evaluation tool within the municipality. People just dug in a little bit deeper and worked a little bit harder if they knew that it was going to be a reflection in their paycheck, uh, even if it was only half a percent.
That's, that's true in the pro-profit world and not pro-profit world.
So, um, that way. So, um, I, I would like to, I, I personally don't like the form that you have now, because it doesn't give, it basically gives you either a, you know, person's here, um, or the person's doing, you know, it may align some attributes, but numerically, it's, you know, that way you can have some consistency across the board. So if you have two equipment operators, and one says, well, how come, how come he gets four percent? And we do the same thing. We work at the same level, you know, and he got four, and I only got two. We ran into a little bit of that with our wage adjustments, but that was different. We were doing wage adjustments versus doing actual merit-based evaluation pieces. So I think that having a numeric, and that, that way you can explain to somebody, hey, listen, if you wanna get the same as the guy next to you, you gotta dig a little deeper, or you gotta go get a little bit more training. Or, you know, some people just don't, you know, they become stagnant, or, um, and they don't get some more, you know, training out there, cause they say, well, I think I know everything, but, you know, there's always something new to learn. There really is, um, that way. So I, I, I'd like to use a, a tool that's that way, and, you know, I know that Swen has used, you know, at times when he's looked at evaluations, and I think since I've been here, there've been a couple of occasions where we've had a couple employees, and he's put it into his, a matrix-type of system, so I know, um.
I've, well, we've used that in the town in thirteen and fourteen, but we haven't used it the last couple of years, but, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I do think that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a working tool, um, sometimes with needs, needs for modifications from time to time, whether it be the compensation scale itself, um, but, um, once again, I, I personally like, I don't like the ranges. I like the, you know, you meet the minimum, and then from there you grow, uh, because Greg and I might have the same job.
But you're going down.
But he comes in three times a year, four times a year late, and he might, he might not get a, he might get a three on that, but I get a four, cause I'm always in fifteen minutes early. I'll just use that for an example. So that extra point, you know, equates to that, you know, almost a, you know, uh.
Bump.
Part of a, you know, a tenth of a percent, just shy of a tenth of a percent. I mean, it's not a lot, but you get a couple of those, and next thing you know, it might, might be a half a percent, you know? So, uh, at least some, it gives also the ability for an employee to look at it and see where they're gonna grow.
Well, if you're gonna continue to get raises for empty nine years for this same position, you gotta get rid of longevity. To me, that, you're just double-dipping on that. You get longevity, and then they sit and say, well, I'm gonna give another raise on top of that one. You give, you give them one raise just for not, for just showing up.
You talking about longevity pay? You talking about longevity pay?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that, but I, I, I don't differ with them. You have to, I do agree that you have to factor in for the total wage, that longevity pay that the town does, and, and that's not always been done. So I do agree that you have to factor that in, if that's your point.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I mean, some, some towns, based because of this type of a system, I believe, they've done two things. Well, Guilford, everybody does it different. Guilford still does cost of living. Moltenborough does not. You know, longevity, some towns have eliminated longevity, rolled it into base salary, called it good, gone strictly to merit-based, and, um, you know, I mean, there, there may be a few extra points, because as somebody's here, and they're learning more, and they're educating more, then they potentially could rise to heaven-higher, um, productivity based upon knowledge and experience. Some people go stagnant, um, and I did have that in a couple situations where, you know, an employee just, you know, they were just, that was it, you know?
Yeah.
They just, they, they, they were doing the job, they were fulfilling the function, um, but, you know, they, they, and, and they were satisfied with that. They were satisfied that, you know, they were able to be responsive to the task.
Longevity, is that something that is required right now?
No. Well, it is under your, under your policy.
Part of what Durham does.
Personnel policy now.
Our policy is longevity. It's not a state issue?
No, no.
So then we're gonna, and I agree with the, the two selectmen here, that we're gonna have to make sure people understand if we're giving them that longevity, that, that's money. And so this idea of, you know, increasing, you know, for whatever reason, either merit or for other reasons, I think we should always keep in the upfront that longevity is there, and that's, that's their first raise with us.
Yeah, either that, or you should just work it into the.
Total wage.
The, the wage.
Which I, which I would favor.
You're dumb with it.
I would favor, you know, they should not lose what they currently have.
Correct.
But I would favor modifying, having it all into one wage, wage rate, and that's what you're dealing with.
Yeah, I know a lot of municipalities have done it. It just makes it cleaner.
Right.
It's easier, then you just deal with one compensation schedule, uh, that way. Just like the, you know, the paid time off.
Yeah.
You know, versus sick, versus vacation, and combining it, and it's just, that's it. So it simplifies the process.
It's clean.
Eliminates error.
Yeah.
Or, you know, you have one, one person, next thing, you just happen, your computer system didn't pick it up or whatever, and they've advanced another year, and they've been shorted fifty bucks or whatever. Then you go and, and next thing you know, you look bad, you know, or the town, you know? And they feel like, oh, you did this against me, and it's not that, it's just, things happen. If you can eliminate the errors, uh, potential risk for errors, then I think that's better. And I would, I know I've heard some of that conversation in, in, in that draft personnel plan, you know, some of that will be what I will put in to see if you like that type of application, whether it be the.
Is that with all?
Longevity into the pay, um, whether it be paid time off, you know, uh, for full-time staff, you know, then, then you have the holidays, um, how the holidays are compensated. I know for, you know, I was always used to, like, with the, with the police department, which works rotating shifts and, and that type of thing, rotating days off, uh, we, we just, we compensated them first week in December, first pay period in December, they got all their holiday pay, they just got, it was just paid to them, uh, versus going through that whole, potentially you have errors there, and you can have some additional compensation risks with holidays, and that way, cleaner.
Okay.
Yeah. So I just, uh, probably for that March sixth meeting, uh, you know, if this is something that you think that you might be comfortable with, um, then, first of all, I'd like to during the next month here, do a, do a training session.
Go train.
For the staff, just to talk about, about that. I did show the staff this actual rating form, and said I was gonna be bringing it to the board for discussion for merit-based compensation based upon a, a point numeric schedule, whatever variation that may be for compensation. And, uh, if that seems to be something that you're thinking that you might be able to work with, or.
If I put it that way, might be able to work with?
Well, I know, I may, I, I know I may not be able to sell everybody a hundred percent, but, um, I would like to have a tool that we could try to work with. I think it would gain some stability within the, within the, um, employees.
Swen's a little bit.
Well, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm quite frankly, uh, used to working in that environment. I also understand the union influence stuff, cause I've done some of that too. Um, I happen to agree with Scott, that if you have, um, if properly, yeah, the compensation program properly managed, and that is based on really fair and neutral performance evaluations, that it is a system that will be very, very positive for the employees, and it also helps you manage the employees in, in the right way in each department. But, but the key is to make sure that you do your in-service training, the key is make sure you're consistent and keep it neutral, but, yeah, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that.
All right.
I mean, the, the point here is, be careful what you incentivize.
I'm sorry?
Be careful what you incentivize, cause that's what you're gonna get, so.
Right.
Make sure it's fair, and make sure it's neutral in terms of.
That's the, that's the biggest thing, I thought. I was, I was, I gave this to my foreman at the highway when we first started doing it. He had never done evaluation, went through the training, gave it to him. I got some of the most honest evaluation back. It was just, I was like blown away. Because some people would have thought, because he likes getting along with everybody, doesn't wanna ruffle anybody's feathers, that it could be slighted or, or sided, I guess I should say, not cited. And.
Favoritism.
He, he just looked at it, you know, based upon his working experience with that individual, and it scored, the score was a score.
That's what you have to do.
And, and it was, it was good, and then it was good dialogue through the, and, and we also gave this to the employee. We asked them to rate themselves as a self-avowed.
Which is what you should be doing.
Right. And, um, then, then afterwards, after everything's all said and done, and things are decided, then there's close a meeting with the, the individual to.
Well, that's the, that's the point that you, is why you do that, is two things. One, you want the individual to think about their performance and how they're doing. And it provides talking points as you walk through each of the points to say, you know, you said you were very good, but I don't have you quite so good because, 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 or vice versa. You thought you were a little short in this, but I think you're doing very well because, because, because.
Right.
So it gives you good talking points on that.
Right. Yeah, I was always an underrated when I rated myself in a lot of areas, and then, then you have other people that overrate, you know, and it's just, just, it just happens to be how they.
But part of the training is how you work with that kind of a situation, so.
Doesn't matter how modest they are.
All right.
We probably oughta.
All right.
As I say, as I say, it's not bragging if you back it up.
That's right.
Murray Bird, famous saying.
That's right. So you want us to work on this a little bit, if we wanna tweak it a little bit? Is that what you're asking us to do?
Yeah, um, if you have some comments, I mean, I.
Okay.
That way, I, I mean, I like using something that's already proven by somebody else. I haven't messed with too much, but.
Okay. So you wanted input from each one of us?
I'd like to know if this is the direction we're gonna go in, or just give them the whole form and let you guys do your, do your thing afterwards.
Well, why don't we?
I don't wanna waste a lot of time.
I didn't see a lot more of the form either, so. But I don't have an alternative either. So this is probably better than, what have we got?
Yeah, I don't like the.
You know my comments? Uh, you know, I don't believe, given raises just cause we need to give a raise, you know? I've always said, well, it's the same job that was done last year, why am I paying more this year? You know, why is my constituents, it's not me, it's my constituents. Why am I, that constituents paying more for the same job that was done last year? That's an important question to always ask yourself, you know, come from the other side of the coin. Anyway, we probably oughta move on.
Yeah, we could debate that for a long time.
Right.
Probably not for today.
I got the last word in.
I have something.
Oh, I didn't get the last word in.
No, I'm just joking. I'll pass all my information to you.
Last word.
Yeah.
I had. I had it.
Okay. Don't matter, as long as we got the last word in.
The other, the other. The other, the other item is, and I'll just give you a copy of this, but the, Mr. Abbott did return and I did meet with him yesterday. His initial offer of employment that he has accepted his, accepted. And he'll be coming, he, he came in yesterday, I gave him a little bit of a tour of the place. He had, he had a series of questions and some of them I was able to answer, some I couldn't because they were about the permitting process that we use here and working through that. So he'll, he'll have to talk with Peter about that.
First day, start date is February 27th?
Yeah, that's what I, I put down towards the end of the month here. We, you know, we have to do the pre-employment check and, and get him a physical and such there, so. Cool, we'll get that down, you know. He'd like to talk with Peter and, you know, see what resources are available to him. You know, as far as books and we may have to order in some stuff because Peter may have.
Make sure, yeah, make sure Peter has him on the license, you know, to be able to use the software that he recently got.
Right, yeah, that's the other piece too, we need to, he, he was curious about that as to how that, how that works. He, he'll come with a tremendous amount of resources there. He's got, he's worked really hard with the current fellow over there, the building inspector in Barrington, created a lot of forms, I say forms or educational handouts for a lot of things. And Peter has some of those as well. But he can help expand upon them, you know. Some of the stuff must get generated out by that ICC group. And then they've just kind of run with it. But he's got a whole rack full of different resources that'll be available to people, so I think that's a good thing.
So he's on board?
Yeah.
And is up for February 27th?
Yeah, he will be.
So we'll learn everything else works.
All right. And the other item is as far as I provided you in your packet with the advert, advert, advertisement and job description information that was the Gen NATO one that currently fills that position as to whether or not you wish to put this forward out now or you wish to wait moving forward.
What would be waiting for?
Yeah. Okay. I mean, you don't want to hesitate, do you?
No, I, I mean, I would advertise for it.
Yeah.
Now. Yeah, collect the information and after, you know, first part of the month of March, they start looking at the paper review and then, then doing interviews.
And, and you, you put this, is there an organization that they look at online, these people?
List service and all sorts of stuff.
Yeah, we can.
List serve, there's NHMA, there's list serve, all that just done.
New Hampshire Finance, yeah, Finance Officers.
And you know, you know all those?
Yeah.
The, the, okay.
Yeah.
And put that out.
Okay. So I'm, I'm fine with this, are you fine with this?
Do we want to put the dollar range in here? As a tendency to, you know, incentivize people we just talked about.
Yeah, I did not because I took this right off of what Carter had put together before when he posted this. He had posted this originally in-house, I believe, for that position. So I believe the range that had been set up for this, and I had looked it up, I think it was between 17.
Was it 1622 or something like that? Maybe 23?
You can look it up.
Yeah, I'll look it up, but I thought.
Up to 25, wasn't it?
No, no. That was the finance manager that went with this position.
Yeah. I know that you started that position at 1725.
Okay, so remember it was something around 22, 23, I think.
Yes, I believe that was, I believe that was correct.
But anyway, you just.
Yeah, just look it up and.
Yeah, that.
I mean, do 23, you know, I mean, do a nice high end so they got something to look forward to.
Do you, do you add, do you also advertise on the base item?
Okay, I didn't see it in your notes, that's what I'd ask.
Well, actually, I've been, I've been using that Seacoast Media. I find that two things, Bayside is expensive. And I know it does get to the local folks, but Seacoast Media puts it on electronically. Out on a, I guess a.
Is, is that the newspaper?
Yeah, and, and it does go one, one time in the Fosters, usually on a, towards the weekend and the things.
And that's cheaper? And that's cheaper, you're saying?
It actually is.
Oh, all right.
Well, you get more bang for your buck because you get both to do that. I think the last advertisement on the, on the, it worked out to be about with the electronic side of things. And they run the electronic one for a longer period of time, even though you only get one print version with it. I want to say it was just over a hundred dollars or one, 120, 130. That slip is in there for the last one, we just did.
Well, you, so far as we've got some good candidates have been coming forward.
But you will do something with the Bayside, right?
I just, I just do not.
I, I don't think it hurts.
Okay.
I mean.
I don't know what to say, but I know the candidates you've had come for the other jobs have been excellent. However, you've got those, however you attracted those.
Yeah, I, I'll look and see how we did that.
Tough to make decisions, okay.
Makes it tough to decide. They're so good.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing.
That's what you want.
Yeah, yeah, the more the better.
Not the more the better.
All right, so that's all I have under the administrative side of things. Other than, I just will say, I should back up on the employee performance side of things. Just to keep in mind that technically under my contract, the month of February is the month for you folks to look at my review. In, in, as far as that goes, so maybe, maybe independently during the next few weeks here, I mean, I'm, you know, all that works out, but there's still, there's a thought process going on, putting that together. And then we're supposed to collaborate according to the contract after that. So if you, I'll bring your.
Next year will be after.
What's that?
Next year would be after.
Yeah, it would be.
No, when do you, when do you want to collaborate?
Well, you know, we can, maybe we can do it on that March 6 meeting. We can, we can take non-public and talk about that because it really would be a, I, I assume it would be a non-public discussion because we're looking at goals and objectives and also looking at shortcomings, things I need to work on and. It's a personnel.
Spelling, right. You don't bring.
That's not his doing, that's somebody else's.
No, no, no. I have some time to shake for you. Just for yourself.
Yeah.
Do you understand? You look serious.
I'm bringing my origins.
Yeah, but you're only bringing for yourself.
That's right.
Yeah, okay.
I'll bring a whole box. Help out with my rating.
That'll move you, that'll lead you in a positive direction.
You guys in the city.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, we'll schedule some time on March 6. Which would be good because I, you know, I, I think it's important to have that discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to fill out this form?
Hey, it'd be a good test drive for you. Why don't you use that one? I'll self, I'll self-evaluate myself, put together some stuff. I'd also be looking for, you know, maybe some points for the next coming year course, goals and objectives and things that you'd like, you think are important for me to work on, so.
Might send it, could you send that electronically?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, as a matter of fact, I'm going to try, I, I'm going to, I can send that, you know, as a Word document, I believe, and a PDF, but as a Word document. But I'm going to try to make it so I can do one of those PDF fillables. So for the rest of the, because the department.
That's a special ability, I think.
Yeah, I do have that, yeah.
Word is funny for me.
And on the new business, I do have a purchase order, which I wrote up with my administrators. Speaking with the folks at Public Works, they have put together a request for salt and they hope that this will carry them through the rest of the season. As there'll be a new contract come out July 1 from the state, I hope that this will.
This is state bid?
Yes.
With the Morton Salt or the Morton Salt?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, I like your statistics here, you put in the notations.
Yeah?
Yes.
Nice to know, you know, where we stand, that's, that's very good.
Yeah, and I, I think, I, I also made reference to in being involved with the Public Works Association. There, they have that PW net, which we're all connected to. And hearing what other people, you know, kind of, it's a nice gauge knowing where other communities are on their budgets. Over time, we appear to be, you know, operating in the same range that other communities are based upon.
Yeah, just 10% higher.
Well, we're, I said that based upon this, you know, this next evolution. I think we'll put it at that number. So in other words, we end the season, I mean, unless we get hammered over the next three weeks or six weeks. Oh, yeah, you know, with a good old Groundhog there giving us six more weeks of winter is.
Is that what happened?
If we get hit two or three storms.
I think they've been accurate about 20% of the time.
I see you said 65% of the time, but they say they did not understand what the, Phil was saying to them. So they give him 100%, their inaccuracy is to 65.
Yeah.
Poor Groundhog, you have to wake him up, slap him around, hold him up to the people. I'm surprised the animal rights are.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Anyway, I'll make a. 15,000 people show up to that.
How many?
15,000.
It's good for the economy.
The hotel rates are higher than they were at the Super Bowl. Anyway, moving on to the most.
$400 a night there.
Wow. They didn't get it out of me.
Yeah, you can go to your backyard and look at it.
Motion. Motion to authorize purchase order number 2383, I repeat, 2383 to Morton Salt of Chicago, Illinois in the amount of $12,048 for the purchase of 200 tons of Safe D salt.
T.
Yep, that's Safe, S A F E dash capital T dash S A L T. Said expenditure to come from Highway and Streets account 01-4312-10-662.
I'll second that.
All right, that's Piquet that makes the motion and Greg that makes the second. So all those.
Are any, any discussion?
Here we go, no, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Do you want everybody to sign this or just Dave?
No, you go.
Sand consumption should be coming way down. This may be going up, but.
Correct.
Sand should be coming down. Oop, Pumicey already?
No, I don't, no, I got it. You know, we do have to move it.
That's an Irish gig, isn't it?
Whatever the phone has. I didn't, I didn't set the tones on it.
Take what they give us. Okay, Mill Foil Grant application.
Yep, the Mill Foil Grant application Fred Quimby dropped off. The grant application that they do annually with Department Environmental Services for the weed pulling for a Mill Foil treatment. Same as last year in their application process and what's available to the town. The grant is about, the state portion is $1,245. And, and our, our share is, I believe, 26. Yeah, I'll look here real quick. I believe it's $2,600 is our portion of that, which comes from the CRF.
Oh, it's 20, this shows 29.
Oh, is it 29 on that?
2905.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 2905. So it's 4150 is the total. Last year, actually, I think it was a little bit less with our contribution, but not 100% sure of that. So he would like to have a couple of different points have to happen. DES, as in other state agencies. First of all, you have to have a, a motion to accept the grant funds and to authorize the chairman as the person that can sign the grant application and that he has such authority to do so. And I believe that motion should cover it. I have to, I then fill out an affidavit, have it notarized that in fact this did happen at this meeting and that you did vote to allow the chairman to sign the application, so.
Is it that official?
Oh, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, DOT has the same thing.
Me, I'll do.
So there is some places to sign here, the chairman to sign and initial all these pages. I didn't put a little.
They like to call, that'll do.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept grants, funds from the Department of Environmental Services for Mill Foil Exotic Species Program and to further authorize the chair to sign the grant application and other related contract documents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Swens makes the motion and Greg seconds it? Any further discussion? Here we go, no, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
So we can, we can sign this afterwards.
Let's do it now and get it out.
All right, so the chairman needs to sign, he needs to little sign here, print, nothing else. I can sign the rest of it. I mean, I can, I have an notarized, and then he has initially each one of these, initial date on these pages.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
Okay.
Okay, and then he has to sign again?
Nope, then I sign this affidavit. He had the vote today, official.
So there and there. And then you have to initial all these little dates, there's a data.
I did do up a new scope of work contract that we had done last year so that they can provide that to the diver dash person, I guess that's what they call them. Diver assisted something. Trying to think of what dash actually stands for, but.
Is this, is this sort of a additional information on that or?
That's what Dave's, yeah. That's the actual grant application or grant agreement.
Is it just for our?
Yeah, just so you'd have it. Yeah, and I'll actually, I'll, I'll show you this, this is what I drafted up for, which is the same as last year, just change the dates on it.
The seven, two, seven.
Pass those around. This will end up being signed by the, and then you can give one to the guys.
I got this all right. This is a. And this is a.
I sent it to Fred and he'll get it signed by the company and.
And do we?
And then we'll sign it after.
After he's taken care of. And you'll put that up in our boxes or up in the selectmen room? Or does it have to go back to a meeting?
I may have to have an actual, you know, vote on it. So it'll be at the March 6 one, yeah. If Fred gets it signed, he has to have the vendor sign it.
Must have to sign here, don't I?
No, that's his.
That's you?
That's all.
Yeah, I'll certify, I'll certify that I'm here and that you did and everybody voted and I'll hook the minutes right to it. That's generally what we end up doing as far as just to validate it.
Well, you don't think we'll get this in February, that, this one? Can't do that in February, you want to do that in March?
Yeah. Yeah, generally, they have to.
So you think maybe March 6th would be possibly?
For what?
For then, for us signing this other form?
Yeah, that's the agreement on the.
This is the one right here.
The agreement for the diver assist.
Okay, they probably won't go out before then anyway.
I wouldn't.
I looked at the last one, you signed it in March, so, March 16th or whatever. So that's all I have, the new business, unless somebody else has something. But we had, I do have old business, which is Foot Pro Community TV. And I provided you with an email from Tim Goodwin relative to his explanation relative to the station operation budget and a revised production quotation.
You've got something on the second page, pencil it in. I'm going to show it to you.
Yep, handwritten.
Yeah.
Yeah, that if we were up and running and, and at least with one site and things were okay, we would be okay the first of March. were okay, we would be okay the first of March. But if we wanted to go a little bit longer, because, you know, I'd be testing this at the same time with doing the other meetings at Town Hall, so not just selectmen's meetings. So however you want to handle that.
Well, there are, there are two or three things that are a little bit concerning, both ways. First of all, the, you know, the issues at the deliberative session last night, probably couldn't have happened at a worse time, as you know. Sorry about that.
Well, it's not his fault.
But having, well, I understand that and he knows that. But having said that, I've also understood from Justin and others that there may be a bandwidth issue in various locations. And what I mean by that is that live streaming or, or being able to use that online may not be as smooth unless we have it thoroughly checked that we have, you know, enough bandwidth and enough Wi-Fi strength to take care of it.
Yeah.
As an example, I know right in this building, he indicated there's a problem, he can't do it right now.
Right.
It's not because of his fault, it's because of our.
System.
Broadband system and IT system not being able to take care of it. So, you know, there is some concern on that relative to what we're doing. Second, third part, actually, first was last night's thing, second was that. Third part is that I do have some concern and I know you're planning on dual tracking it, which I think is the right way to do it. So I just want to make sure that we are still planning on dual track. What I mean by that is you're running both for us for one or two years at least and maybe more, just to assure everything is.
Yeah, that was what the plan was that we had set up and we'd run both systems just to see how they, how they work and how, what the quality is and people are comfortable with it.
Yeah, yeah, just like buying a new truck, make sure the new one works.
Kind of test drive a little bit, see what the, see what the bugs are that need to be.
Trade it and you can't do that.
Yeah, don't trade it. Now, let's go back to if we do our system, we'll all set up, then someone will go and flip on the switch, they'll look to see to make sure it's working.
Yeah, a little red light can move.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you could go on, you could have a tablet or a, you know, device to check it.
Okay, and that would be live streaming at that time?
Yes.
Okay. And then if we want to see it, you know, other than that meeting, physically when it's the first time we could see that meeting?
Anytime thereafter. There's no delay. It's automatically, it's, it's piped right into the cloud, so it's, it's automatically.
So if I get on my computer and get on the town website, I can go to?
Town Hall Streams, there'll be a button on there just like there is now for, for live stream.
Click on that and then they'll have a little picture of the meeting, I guess, still. And then, then someone will have to put in the date. It's the new Durham Board of Selectmen, you know, well, if it's the day 2/7/17. Who physically does that?
Either I would, Laura would, whoever's scheduling the meetings. So that, that's how that gets put on there. So in other words, we go into a calendar program and put in there that we want camera, Town Hall to broadcast from 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM on March 6th and that'll be for the board's selecting meeting. So that is the time in which that camera will be hot and that's what will be recorded.
So it, it actually, you, you punch it in at the Town Hall first.
Yep.
Someone physically does that.
Correct.
And if they don't, then we don't get recording.
Correct. Yeah, it has to be scheduled and a sched, has to be a scheduled event to activate the.
So if we have a, a, one that isn't scheduled, let's say, but of course.
Then you have to, you only rely on the hand recorder.
Oh, we cannot say we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow?
Oh, you could do it any, we could say we're gonna have a meeting in 15 minutes and we could schedule it.
And it'd be up so somebody could look at it? Okay. But this, now we rely on either you or Laura to do that?
Well, whoever. I mean, we can have multiple people signed up to do it. We could have, it set up that every board chair, you know, has the ability to, to go ahead and do that. But we would have multiple people signed up within the Town Hall that can schedule a meeting. It's no different than how we schedule it now on putting it on the web.
But they'll remember to do this part of it?
Yeah, generally you end up mapping, the idea would be to map out your entire year's schedule. That's what we did in Moulton Borough was, we knew that the planning board met first and third Tuesdays and they blocked every first and third Tuesday.
But if you have a snow day, you're able to adjust.
Then that's when you have to go in and make, well, you either, you have to go in and, like tonight, that could still be hot tonight, but you're not gonna turn the switch on. And, but if you're gonna reschedule the meeting to tomorrow night, like they had a couple of weeks ago, they ended up bumping it from Tuesday to a Wednesday. You have to go in and make that change.
And you say they, which means you?
One of us, somebody, somebody in the town.
Okay.
That's the point. Like today, I mean, I had the, Laura warned me to put something on the front of the webpage about the cancellation and I know how to do news and announcements and stuff like that. Right now, to try to keep somebody, it's, it's difficult right now because the system is antiquated.
So, so then we get it on the cloud or whatever, but, but the point is it's gonna be on the town website, so any resident can get on the town website and, and look it up.
Correct.
Right? Okay. And they can watch the meeting?
Yep.
Okay. But now you're, but you're telling me that we are not gonna be burning the DVDs on this, though?
No.
So we have no record, if we want a physical record of it?
Well, you could go onto the cloud and burn it yourself.
Okay.
Burn the recording.
Do we, do we get a lot of requests for DVDs?
No, other than from board of selecting numbers.
Okay.
Sometimes, you know, just because you wanna take it and.
Yeah.
Go look at it. That's the only people that I've ever had, I might have had one other person since I've been here in a year that has asked for a DVD recording.
Okay. So that would.
Other than that, it's been a select.
So that'd be our own responsibility to do?
Yeah. And once again, that's a, that's a cost savings.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
I'd like to throw that plug.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
For myself.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Your time.
Remember that, my, my wish.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yeah, well, we'll give you that.
Draw it down.
Half of what we saved there, which had been 27 cents, we'll give you 13 and a half. Now, okay, so how long will this stay on the cloud that we can see it?
Five years.
And in five years, it just disappears?
Here's that, we have to put it on to back it up. I'm working with.
But we could do that.
You could, yep.
For a history type of, you know, like we do with minutes, but if, if the minutes, would something happen to a minute, would we have this in, in an archive somewhere that we could pull it up and, and look at?
I had talked with the fellow from Town Hall Streams, Eric, about that we have a external hard drive and about the possibility of being able to also back that up in-house for the sake of something.
It pops there, yeah.
And I know he's had some conversations with Tom from Spaulding Hill about that and the mapping that could take place. The other thing is the camera itself, as long as it's activated and turned on, very similar to, I think that, does that one have an SD card in it too, Justin? No, that one doesn't. So I think the camera setup that will be there will also have a SD card in it. So it gives you a immediate backup, but it's rewritable, is my thing in that right? Gets recorded over?
It records and only can, depending on how big the chip is, if it's 32GB, it can only hold two hours.
Two hours.
Most, most cameras come with two, two slots.
You can get a, yeah, you can buy 64, 120, you can buy bigger.
They get pricey, yeah.
SD cards, so.
And then you could keep those little cards in a file.
I don't wanna keep, I don't wanna keep anything. The idea is to, to, you know, cut your footprint as much as possible and only do what is mandated by statute. Because when you go way, way crazy, then you end up having a records issue and records management issue. Because right now, there's no, you're mandated to keep written minutes and keep them for life. But those DVDs, right?
I thought we just changed it to PDF.
Oh, you can keep them to PDF, I guess.
Yeah, we just changed to R.
That always scares me too, because the next thing you know, there'll be something different than PDFs. We, we won't have a five and a half, five and a quarter floppy to run a machine to run it.
That, that right there was a half a day discussion.
Yeah.
PDF is just a file system, so.
Yeah.
PDFD, I think, is the.
So anyways, the idea would be to try to not have to keep that stuff, other than for the immediacy like that recorder right there. We keep that for the immediacy of backup.
Yeah, but when I was doing the minutes.
Yeah.
We have no video on one. The minutes are, at best, I feel needed more work. I asked, I have not asked physically for a recording of it, but we don't, we might not have a recording of it.
You may not, because it may have been recorded over by now. Depending. I mean, those are pretty, those hold quite a bit of information.
Just read my revisions, Greg. You're all set.
You're all set.
What are you, what are you talking about? What do you think you've lost?
You walked into that one.
I did, I, I did. It's, it's a Swens story. Yeah, but you will release your, you take little notes.
They're in the minutes. 90% of the stuff's in the minutes.
All right.
All right.
That's why there's a link there.
I was thinking a minute.
So the real question on this whole, well, I think Swens, I think I interrupted you.
No, no.
I know you talked about the.
I'll just give him Greg a one.
Technology type stuff is, I think, you know, what, what they have put together here is about, you know, costs. It'll be between $5,000 and $6,000 if, if we continue working with Wolfboro Community TV to help.
Annual cost.
Annual cost for 2016.
Over the 12 grand or 11, almost 12 grand that we, we set aside.
Basically about half. For them to then help us through this first quarter and evaluate, assess, and then secondarily to then pick up thereafter, if Town Hall Streams is working okay to your satisfaction, would be for them to then pick up and, and be kind of like a production, I call it a production, person where they take the Town Hall Streams information and put it on the peg channels for us, for both Metro Cass and they're working on TDS as well. And they would do that. And I believe they would still do deliberative session. Plus they do the school stuff that they all, they.
Yeah, well, I.
I think they do the schools. Ah, school stuff might be iffy.
Yeah.
But we don't, I don't ask them to do.
Okay, so we'll save four to five grand a year by doing.
Initially.
Huh?
Initially and then, and going forward and, you know, next year we'll have to talk about that. I think Tim will have a, you know, a better sense as to how much time it takes them. We would probably want to have that discussion with them, you know, and find out what that value is for them to just do the production piece. I would look for that production piece to probably be reduced, you know.
So this could be a savings of $6,000.
Well, you, you have Town Hall Streams, that's $3,600 for all three, to have all three locations. I am working with him.
You're gonna have a net savings of about two to four.
Yeah. Yeah. But, I mean, I'd look to fine tune that.
This year.
This year.
You should be quite a bit plus.
Yeah, you should see some. I, I would think you'd see some more because that Wolfboro Community TV's had to do the first quarter for us and they charged us for it.
And how much do they?
I didn't, I didn't anticipate that happening.
How much are they charging?
Six, I think.
It's about $3,900 roughly.
Four grand for the first quarter?
Yeah.
Four, eight, twelve. So it's more than we pay them in their contract?
Not much.
Does that? No, they, they, we pay 11.6.
Yeah, that's what comes to that. So it should only be the quarter?
Yeah.
Well, they actually.
Yeah, it's a third, I'm sorry. They charge it as a third because it goes through to April 1. So they charge it off of the third.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's, okay, so that's where the four, okay, so that's where the four comes.
Have to be till May 1 if it was the third.
That's why I say I think this is a little bit more negotiable than.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm at, that's what I'm asking.
I figured it out on a per month basis, dividing out the 11.6, but that, you know, doesn't help them on their operating costs. That's what hits them hard.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
All right, now we get minutes.
Well.
We get something else?
No, no, you have to, are you looking for an action here?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to, I'd like to, you know, if you feel comfortable with doing this, I'd like to, you know, kind of give Wolfboro Community TV a nod as to, yeah, we're gonna move forward. But I also want to have some more discussion with them just on the, you know, make sure that the cost issue is reflective of.
Well, you should do that anyway, shouldn't you?
I think that, I think definitely that should happen.
Okay, here's some arc against Scott.
I wanna just, I just wanna let them know that, yeah, we would like to have you continue to do this, have them draft a contract for their scope of services and what that dollar amount's gonna be moving forward from April 1 till December 31.
I, I don't think you have any problem asking them to move ahead of the contract under the understanding that you're still working a pricing, you know, a properly mutually agreeable pricing situation.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any problem with that. I, I could go along with that.
Okay. I, I thought that's where you were going already.
Well, yeah, I just wanted to give them a little.
No, let's, let's say, phrasing it differently. They're looking for an intent from us on what we would like or what we think we, we would be doing. The fact that they're, you would give them, go ahead to, you know, draft an agreement and all that stuff does not mandate us to sign that agreement, but it does indicate to them our intent that says, if we can work out a reasonable pricing situation, we have interest in your services.
Right.
That's really what you're asking.
Yeah, and, and of course, things are a little bit up in the air because we just wanna double, we're double checking ourselves. I mean, I know what it worked, how it worked in another community and we need to make sure it's gonna work okay here as far as the production based upon bandwidth and all that other stuff. I think we're, I think we're gonna be okay, but we'll know, I think he's gonna come tomorrow and set the camera up, so we can try the first meeting, whatever the next regular meeting is.
Okay.
So I'll put that together, so we'll have it for March 6. And hopefully by then we'll have some feedback as to the productions. Okay. So I did send out our minutes, just so you know.
Last minute, last minute minutes.
Last minute minutes. I did get them in.
Well, I didn't find them. Did you put them up online?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay.
No, no. Well, I haven't gotten that file yet.
Okay. January 30th we're talking about.
Yeah, January 30. So I, I have the hard copies. I'll give them to you and I emailed them out to you.
Oh.
As well.
We just sent them this morning.
I just sent them within the last hour before the meeting.
Okay.
Well, actually, the first time I sent them, I forgot to send them, I sent them to myself and not to you guys and, because I always send.
Did you get them okay?
Yeah, I got them, I got them fine. I got them real quick.
A good one, Swens.
So that's the, those are the public 30th meeting minutes, so you can work on those for March 6 or whatever.
He sent it electronically.
Yeah.
So I asked you first, what minutes can we work on?
All of them.
None of them.
Well, I clean them up here.
I don't, I don't know, is he, we, well, you're right, you're right.
I am, I am time limited, I will tell you that.
Yeah.
But I, I would go for the, for the two in December, if you're ready for those, I can go for those.
Well, I, I, I'll tell you, well.
Which ones you have ready, Greg?
I have some and I don't have any.
Well, some, we'll work on some.
Okay.
Anything better than that.
Yeah.
And the reason, the reason Greg, I mean, Scott probably said that is because if I don't get elected, I don't think I can vote on the.
Well, we got two more meetings before that happens.
We do?
Yeah.
We got one more.
One.
We got two.
So we'd be crowded.
We got the one at the end of this month. We got the first one.
We don't have any.
No, we used to get rid of that one.
No, you just, you're not meeting until March 6. That's the only.
We're not meeting the rest of February?
No.
Well, why don't people tell me these things?
We discussed this rather extensively.
You're supposed to go to, you're supposed to take your wife now, she retired to Hawaii.
I'm going to.
Wait a minute, so we're not doing the 20th then?
No, no. You can come visit me. No, the 20th's a holiday. Make sure you put, put a line through that, it's holiday, President's.
It's President's Day.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the reason why. Well, I'm not working.
Our staff takes off President's Day?
Oh, sure.
They aren't.
You want to work?
They do have holidays here.
This is not the agricultural system.
It's a novel system.
That's right. You're not a farmer that day.
It's maybe, Chris.
Although we could, although we could.
Families don't get holidays.
Plants.
So there aren't, the next meeting is the 6th. Uh, so there aren't, the next meeting is the sixth.
Ah, that's what we said.
That's it.
Yep, uh-oh.
We didn't talk to you, we talked around you.
Yeah, I know that.
That's how we get around them.
This is what happens. I don't finish my job. Well, alright, okay, so.
So whatever you can do now.
December nineteenth.
When do we have, the, okay, the, the, okay, the nineteenth. I have three things that I'm concerned about.
Nineteen. Three things what?
The nineteenth, December nineteenth.
December nineteenth?
Yeah.
I gotta look at here.
I have under appointment announcements, but we, actually, that should be under public input.
I think it's town administrator.
See, I said, it says here, Selectmen and Anthies wishes everyone a Merry Christmas, and thank Town Administrator Kidman for his work.
Hold your horses here.
Okay, wait. Not, I, well, I don't know, public input, I think that would fall in the appointments or announcements. Okay, well, that's fine. It's an announcement. Okay, so we'll leave it there. Yeah. Alright, so that's fine. Now, I, we could embellish on that a little bit, because I actually said, Selectmen and Anthies wishes everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank Administrator, uh, Scott Kidman for his outstanding, outstanding work this year. Also.
Outstanding, oh, you want to add outstanding, is that what you're saying?
And a very merry, a very happy New Year. What I said is, Selectmen and Anthies wishes everyone a, and then I put in very Merry Christmas.
You want to add this to his file also?
Yeah, and Happy New Year, okay, and Happy New Year. And thank Town Administrator Scott Kidman, I meant Scott, Scott Kidman, for his outstanding, and I put in outstanding work this year, outstanding work this year. I also thanked our Chair for the outstanding job. What, you're vomiting?
No, I, no, oh, yeah, that's right too, I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I also thanked our, our Chair for the outstanding job during, um, some adverse situations this past year, but always looked after lowering taxes and coming under budget. Also thanked our Chair for outstanding job during sometimes adverse situations this past year.
Adverse conditions?
Yeah, during sometimes adverse situations.
This year?
Yeah, this, with, this past year. Yeah. But once again, lowered taxes, and, and we came under budget.
If you wish to add that, I think you have to add my comments as well, which, uh, I, then I'm not prepared to go forward with this at this time.
What were your comments?
I'd have to prepare them.
Oh, okay.
Because I had a response to that. And if you want to, if you want to add that, I want to make sure.
Well, I think, I think what your response was.
I don't think, I'm going to put it where it was.
Well, I know what your response was. You said right after that, as a Selectman, you lower taxes every year, you were a Selectman.
That was part of it, but there's other comments too, so I would, I'd want to prepare some additional information if we're going to add this to it.
Well, let's get what we can together.
Alright, so then the next thing I had was, uh, let's see. On page four of six, uh, the vehicle use policy. Swin said added some things there, which I'm not too uncomfortable, except for, uh, the last, uh, two words in the last sentence at the end, starting with Dot Byzel. And then on page, then it continues on page five of six, resident, okay? But what was said after that is not accurate. She stated that she felt issues was covered in the ethics policy. She never said that. What she said was, she asked, what, why there is not the term personnel use in this policy? And the response from the Board of Selectmen was, it, it was stated in the, uh, the policy. And then she said, oh, I'm sorry, well, I didn't read it, the policy. I had not read the policy. That's actually what was said during that, that, that discussion. So if you want to be accurate, I think we need to put that in there.
I, I don't know what you're asking to be added.
Pardon me?
I don't know what you're asking to be added.
Okay, I, I'm crossing out what you have there, that you have and read at the top of that page.
After resident?
Right.
So from stated?
Yeah.
To the end of that sentence, do we?
She was covered in the ethics policy. She never said that. So that has to be crossed out. And then what I saw on the video is, what she said is, after resident, ask why there is not the term personnel use in this policy? And then it was stated by the Board of Selectmen and others, that it is in the policy, and she said, oh, she said, I, I'm sorry, I did not read the policy. She had not read the policy.
Who said that it was in there?
Um, two of the Selectmen had mentioned it during that discussion, and I think Jarvis did also.
I just wondered, how, how do you want it, how would you want it to be, just the board, the board?
Yeah.
The board said, it's in the policy?
It was stated by the board, it, it is in the policy.
Who in the board?
Well, I said it, and Dave said it, and Terry Jarvis said it.
And that was it?
Well, no.
Oh.
Then she said, she's sorry she had not read them, she did not read the policy. Well, she didn't actually say sorry, she said she had not read the policy.
Oh, she didn't say she's sorry?
No, I, I couldn't, I couldn't quite hear and sound like that, but I could pick up that she said she had not read the policy.
Where, is that on the video, Greg?
I didn't put the number, but it's, it's in that, it's in that, uh, when you get to the point of vehicle use policy, when you pull that up, it's in that area.
So you have to record it worldwide. Okay.
And then, um, I could go on of things I said during that period of time, but, you know, if, if we want to reduce this, the rest of that is, uh, I, I, I mean, in red, Swin said he stated that he felt Selectmen Swin should not be part of this discussion, because he's opposed to the policy. Well, that, that isn't exactly what I said. Uh, you know, but I, the re, it, it was, it was more that from the, from the very beginning, he has not been for this policy.
That is a paraphrase of what you said.
Yeah.
That's okay.
It's a paraphrase, but it's, but, you know, you, you, it, it should be a little more accurate.
I don't think so.
Well, actually, okay, so then, uh, that is, that's really, that's it, that's all I have. So with those minor changes, I could go ahead and go through this.
As I said, no, that, that should not happen, because I haven't had a chance to review this and then go back and put additional comments, that they have to be in there because of those changes.
I just want to give. Okay, well, let me ask you a question. If I do not, if you're going back to appointment announcements, you just, you don't like me adding what I actually said, uh, that I thought my Chair did an outstanding job?
If it was actually said, I don't have a problem with adding it. I want it to be more complete.
So you want to add what you then said?
I want to be more complete.
Alright, uh, we'll go with, back to first page, Scott, I'll give you a few of mine.
Sure.
I think, I think, uh, also present.
I think it's Chris I, yeah.
Yeah, use A instead of I E.
Yeah, that's my, that's my error.
I've always been introduced to her that way. Did she live by Chris Evans?
She's not a resident though.
Huh?
She's not a resident.
No.
But, uh, neither is Fran Frye, I don't think. But Colomore and.
Well, they're not, you don't have a resident. The resident's not down beside him anyway.
But they should be. Jarvis and Byzel have a resident. He should have resident, he should add resident behind, beside Colomore and Chakuto.
Uh, okay on two, okay on three. On four, for some reason I've got some equivalent, uh, on the second paragraph, Selectmen Swinson made a motion to approve.
On page three, on four.
Four, six. The request of the trustees of the trust fund. Was it, was it a request from them? Has revised.
No, it's a request of them.
To approve the request.
Of them?
Or from them.
It's not from them.
Oh, it should be two.
Well, of them is okay, but two is okay too.
I would put, instead of two.
And I guess you got the date corrected. Good, I had that. Coming down where it says budget review, if you could add the word finance after forty-one fifty. Page five, way down on legal expenses. You see that, Scott?
Yep.
Um, the second line, it says refund. Uh, we used the word relief, and I just thought, just strike a refund and call it relief, if you're, if that's acceptable to everyone.
We may need to add cost, let me just read it.
Well, that one I, I had some additional information on also, but since we're going to go over it.
I think you should add cost for the robot, sets that later.
We almost got it. Okay, cost relief, yeah. I turned it up to seventy-four.
Just now?
Yeah, just now.
Scott, add cost relief.
Leave cost. Yep. And that's all I have.
Okay, so we're going to wait for Swin on this to come back with something. And I'll, I'll do, I'll put mine in print and send it in also then, rather than my hand one.
Well, if Scott's got it all, well, whatever he wants.
Yeah, that'll, that'll clean it up for Scott.
Alright, what else we got that we can?
Okay, let, let's see, so then we're looking, that was December nineteenth. The December thirteenth, um, I have down here, uh, changes hold, I need to hear recorder. We didn't have this on videos, I recall. And, and so I really don't, um, that, 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 in agenda review on the first page, the last sentence, Swin had me saying Selectmen Anthies.
Hold on, let me do.
No.
Have this in the stack of stuff we haven't gone through yet. Where now?
December thirteenth?
December thirteenth.
Alright, I'll email you the video, I mean, the audio.
Where are you, uh?
You can, you can do that for me?
Yeah, because I, I got, I had it on my phone.
How, how do you physically do that? You can send it?
Yeah.
And I can?
Wave file.
And I can pick it up and listen to it?
Yep, you have to click on it.
Is that what you do to me?
The digital age is amazing, Greg.
Yeah, it did work for you.
The digital age is amazing. I hear that these phones, without any wires, you could call people on it.
You're all set. Alexander Graham Bell is amazed.
Well, I was a friend.
Your wife is retired now, so you're gonna, you're gonna get caught up with a lot of things. Now, we're, yeah, I don't know if we're getting that, I don't know. I just like not to be bothered by people. Well, wait a minute, so we need to look, we, well, wait a minute, actually, that, well, I do have other changes. Yeah, this is going, so you'll, if you'll send that to me. So you, we need to pass on this one? Yeah, so.
You don't want to test our memory to see if we know it? Not to, don't, don't test mine, maybe these guys, but.
So you'll send me, send out recording.
Here it goes.
Two, seven, seventeen. Okay, good, okay.
Well, I gotta connect it.
So we'll have those ready for the next meeting. Uh, so December, then November seventh, and, oh, that's that famous one that I don't have either, November seventh. And of course, November seventh. Oh, shoot, this is okay. Uh, where's November seventh? Is that one? Oh, wait, okay, the September nineteenth. I think I, all I have to do on that one is, yeah, I'll send Scott my changes, and they'll be ready for the next meeting. Well, wait a minute, wait, wait, if you don't mind me. Yeah, you, I won't be, okay, uh, yeah, alright, let me, let me add those. So I'll, I'll send those out to Scott, and we'll have that for the next meeting. So that's the nineteenth.
That's September nineteenth.
Yeah, September nineteenth, okay. And then we have.
You didn't do November seventh?
No, I can't find my November seventh. Is that one we've been holding for a while?
Since November. You, you did do some changes on it, because you got a bunch of green on it.
You already, I thought you already said. Have I done those? Yeah?
Yeah.
I don't have November seventh here, so.
Is that my?
Again, it's November seventh today.
Oh, I've done seven, actually.
Yeah, I don't have my, my stuff here on that.
Okay, alright, so I had November seventh done. So I don't have to fuss with November seventh anymore, right? Huh? Oh, no, 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 I have November seventh with me, or I, I've done it. This is the one that we've got to pare down, page two of five. This is the one where we went, this is that long discussion among the four of us about the, uh, about the audit and the tax, whether the five twenty-five, not the five twenty-five, what is it, the, uh, five thirty-five, will, will change or not, and.
Yeah, I've got numerous.
Yeah, and see, I added four pages.
Not numerous yours, but.
No, I know. So I, I had reduced that down. Um, so if you want me to, I'll reduce it down a little bit more. And that would be the only change that I would have, except for one I've already done in appointment announcements. But you say, Swin, you haven't done yours?
No, I, I don't have the stuff that I, that I need for it.
Okay, so we'll have to hold that off. I have that at my home.
Done some on it, but I haven't had.
And September nineteenth, what'd you do with that one?
Well, I've got, it'll be sent to you.
You got it.
We're holding it correct now.
Are you holding it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm already on the nineteenth of September, the December thirteenth.
So we haven't done any, we haven't done any minutes.
We haven't done any of them, but.
No.
Just checking.
But you will, the next meeting you will have all of mine done with, I'm going to actually, rather than just verbally say it to everybody, I'll have it, uh, in green. No, you, somebody just mentioned the September nineteenth. What, what's the status on that?
He said he wasn't ready.
Oh, you said they weren't ready? No, I.
September nineteenth, yeah.
Yeah, September nineteenth. Alright, so we don't have any more ready, or? No. April twenty eighth?
April twenty eighth.
April twenty eighth. This is one that I've looked at.
In the year of.
Yeah, uh, this wasn't on videos, I recall. And I'm not sure why, um.
I, I see, we've gone through it once before, you, because I have a bunch of different.
We looked at it October twelfth, well, we looked at it before that too. I got a bunch of different edits on it. October seventeenth, October twenty first, November fourteenth. We've already gone through it, I think, once or twice.
I don't know.
November fourteenth, Greg, you said you weren't ready yet.
Wait a minute.
That was the last time I think we looked.
Did you make changes on the April twenty eighth?
Uh, yeah, but that was handed out back in May or something.
Is this as changes then for the April twenty eighth one?
Yeah, they read their mind.
But there's not very many in red?
Not that many, no. But you, you indicated on the fourteenth, and then we made some other additional changes when we went over it on the, uh, well, one of those dates. Uh, but they're minor. I can go through those if you want. Want to look through those? I think a couple more years, actually.
Yeah, I think so.
On page two, under abatement, third lineup, uh, it was noted, abatement request must be submitted by the end of April, and E there, yep.
Rather than and, it's and.
And then on page three, solid waste.
Wait, 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 wait. And is actually in, right?
E, E N D, yeah.
Right.
And on page three, solid waste facility, compactor bids, uh, Town Administrator Kidman stated bids were solicited and recommended by Joe Blaski. Uh, solid waste foreman, reviewed, E D.
And reviewed.
Right, and reviewed, E D, you ensure blah, blah, blah. Next paragraph, meeting, second line, research further, F.
Okay.
That's already in there. Um, at the bottom, uh, Chair Vicar paragraph, B S M I layout, and how they export to an Excel, not import, but export. In future meetings, the question.
No, didn't I say exported it from B M S I to an Excel spreadsheet?
No, showing the B M S I layout, how that, they export to an Excel spreadsheet. Excel should be.
Okay, we already had it.
The E should be capitalized on Excel, by the way.
But it's, what do you get on B S?
Showing the B M S I layout, how they export.
Isn't it B M S I?
Oh, sorry, yeah, uh, that's, I didn't even look at that. B M S I, yeah. And that export to Excel with a capital E, and the question mark should be Gary Thornton. That's all the ones that I have.
Yep, yep.
Plus the ones that are red, of course.
So those are basically mine, ones I brought out, so you and I have got ours. Do you have any, uh?
Wait a minute, did you, you have your changes in there?
Yeah, that, what he just stated was my changes.
I just went through, but yours and mine.
Okay, from the last time.
From the last time.
Okay, then why am I holding this then?
Yeah, I think you had indicated you just hadn't read it yet at that time. It's pretty straightforward.
I found it pretty late in the game because I found it as being one of those ones that had been missed.
I have October twelfth probably as the first day we may have looked at it.
Yeah.
And I found it 'cause I was. Twenty-first and the fourteenth of November.
Looking for, um, minutes to back up the trustee of trust funds transfers.
I'm ready to go on this.
Well, let me finish reading, I think I can do this.
You wanna read the whole thing?
No, I'll just read this paragraph.
Oh.
Remember your changes on that.
I did, I just, I was just checking my email, um, the attorney didn't get back to me.
Was it what?
Said it needs to go to D R A.
That's what I thought.
Thinks it, thinks it, so, problematic.
What is this word here?
Furnace limited here, guys.
What is that word there?
Podium.
Wait, is it just a podium?
I bought it for you.
No, 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 I, I.
No, I'm money.
No, and so this, podium is the option. I'm trying to put this together in the sentence, but I guess it, it, it's okay. Get the meetings back.
I don't see any red with it, so I'm gonna say that it's probably okay.
No, no.
That's a good sign.
No.
Be nice if we could.
Okay, I think, I think this is okay then, I, other than.
You can always change if you want.
No, I, I'm trying to see if there's anything that, um.
Jumped out at.
Yeah, I, I, there's a reason for this, and I think it's.
No, it wasn't a reason, I'll be perfectly honest with you, it was.
We gotta get Swin out of here.
Greg, just to put in perspective here, I think the first time we got this was October twelfth. And then November fourteenth.
Okay, and you two.
November fourteenth, you indicated you hadn't had a chance to go over it.
And I haven't, and you're absolutely right, and I keep putting it off because we have the others. I read this through, since we've been here, I'm not way out of line on this then.
Well, that's good.
Is everybody else comfortable with this?
No, what's important, we gotta get Swin's out of here because he's gonna.
I'm furnace limited here.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's go then.
If we don't get it, he doesn't get started, he's gonna be over my house, getting wood for me.
Yeah, there you go.
Gonna be in my woodpile.
What, what did you say? Okay, all right. I don't have a wood burning fireplace, so.
All right.
Well, we changed that with an axe. Chainsaw. Okay, I make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes of April twenty eighth, two thousand sixteen with the amendments.
I'll second.
Swin seconds that, and Vicar may make the motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. There, we got something done.
Yeah, okay, well, up there. All right, and I will provide you with the hard copy for the non-public for January thirtieth.
Well, you gave it to me.
And I emailed it, no, that's the.
You emailed them too, right? Oh, then, oh, you're talking.
You're talking non-public.
Non-public, yeah.
Are these sealed?
These are sealed.
Okay, so.
No discussion on them, you just, you got them. Yeah, you got them. And you have.
What's wrong with your?
We have two other non-public ones that are over a year old, so.
I was just asking Swin what's wrong with this first.
All right, we got it, we got it.
What happens if these minutes don't get approved?
What happens what, your, your draft ones, uh, the, the minutes?
Oh, so those just.
Until they're approved or changed.
Tell them change.
Oh, you're talking about what I, if I should not be here?
Well, no, I mean, just overall, I mean.
Draft, draft, is the minutes until.
Until they're not.
Until they're changed, but when they're changed, then that has to go online. We talked about that, I think you were wrong on that.
Huh?
Well, I, I, I want the finished.
Moulborough, we only posted the.
Yeah, but I want the finished.
Online.
The finished, uh, minutes, online.
If anybody wants to see the official records, they're to come in and look at them.
But they don't, they look online.
To me, that's the wrong way to go.
Yeah.
And I have a good reason for that. It cut, you need to cut down the traffic coming in.
Oh, I don't, I don't disagree with you, I'm just saying, that's, that's the old school.
That was their theory?
That was the old school theory. If you're that interested.
That's real old school.
Seeing those changes, but most minutes, the changing of most minutes is usually not as significant as the changes of your minutes.
Oh, I know.
But other towns may have other situations that are going on that are, you know, cause for that. The other way is, you do your minutes a little bit different because you have them done by, you know, you know, not somebody sitting right here doing it.
Right.
If somebody was sitting here doing them, you'd probably get a little bit better. I, I say better, you'd get a little bit more.
There really shouldn't be a difference, to be honest with you.
I shouldn't, but.
I think what would help is you, you know, you give us a report, and in that report, you give us motions and stuff like that.
I should give that to her.
I really think it'll help because.
Good idea.
Uh, that way, she won't have to guess what we're saying, uh, the spoken word, what it's in print.
I'm hoping this website is easy enough.
You just can't get off, it'll help speed her up, because you've already done a lot of the work.
Right. I'm hoping that the new website makes it easy and that she can do all the posting from her house. She can post the drafts, she can then, after you do your edits, I can send the edits to her.
Yeah.
And, um, even if I just scan them, you know, the edits that are written on it, um, it is, sometimes, it's just as easy for me to go in and do them, actually.
But you'll, but you'll put the finals online?
Oh, yeah, I always.
Yeah, by the time you scan them.
Okay, and take down the drafts?
No, drafts always stay. There's two folders, two separate folders, one draft.
No, no, I meant on, on the, on the minutes.
Yeah, well, the draft stays and the, and so does any approved.
That's what we do, it's.
Any approved, but you don't drop the draft off? Shouldn't you drop the draft off?
Two different folders, well, somebody might want to see what you changed. And then put you on Facebook.
Oh, oh, so there's a, okay, well, then we need to make more changes, huh?
No.
I don't think I mentioned very much on Facebook.
No, no, I'm just, I don't know if I.
All right, thank God I don't have Facebook, I tell you, I'd be upset with people. Now, the important thing before everybody leaves, we have cookies and one milkshake left.
I don't think that's official business, I appreciate it, but I move to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we gotta move to adjourn, right second. Greg seconds that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Now, if somebody wants.